Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Chandler Town Council meeting. Um, I'd like to call it order of parole, all please.
Cheryl Lamis.
Here.
Tom Burnett.
Here.
Sandy Yilder.
Here.
Tanya Wester.
Here.
Ron Woodledge.
Here.
Okay, you all please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in front of us this evening, we have um two minutes here, or not two minutes here, I apologize. We have the July first meeting minutes. Any questions concerned or changes to be had?
One correction underneath park and rec.
Park and rec.
Third line down.
Okay, and third line down.
Should be shoulders instead of should.
Rob the phone with better shoulders on the north side.
Oh, okay. So in the third line down of parks and recreations, it'll be moved from should to shoulder. So add the E R to that, and that's on page three of the meeting minutes. Anything else? I thought you s- okay, alright. Okay, so then if there are not any other changes, questions or concerns, like entertain motions to accept those as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, then meeting minutes will pass as presented with the change of should to shoulder. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens on the agenda. Tonight we have Marty Heine from Plank Road. Would Mike come up to the microphone?
So you'll have to wait your turn.
Alright.
Um, I actually didn't know I was gonna be on the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna defer to Darryl Metzger.
Fair enough. Alright. Then second, we have Mr. Metzger.
Okay, I put Marty on the agenda because I thought uh we're just backing each other here. Uh, on the end uh initiation, I tried to talk at the last meeting after the meeting and um he was kinda aware of that there was any objections and they kinda caught me off surprise, so we have a petition here uh that we, to show that we can get the petition for the remonstrance petition, if that's how far you want to go with it, and I will bring up a copy of that. There you go, and that's the original copy. Okay, there are eight territories, uh property owners in this area, and we have seven signature. All we need is seventy-five percent, that makes eighty-seven percent. I'm pretty sure we can get the other one, so that would be a hundred. So now you have to recognize that it's our position, and we've made a quote. Any questions? Alright, thank you.
You wanna keep the copy of that? Yes, please. Okay, then we'll move on down to the town attorneys.
Okay, um as I let you guys know by email, um and as you'll recall from last meeting, have some approvals before you regarding the fire station. Um, just a real quick recap and reminder of how this works. There is a building corporation that's been set up that will technically be the entity that issues the bonds. That building corporation will enter into a lease with the town, um and the town will pay under that lease agreement, payments equal to what the bonds cost. Um, unfortunately, I think it's kind of annoying under state law, after you sign the lease, um you have to wait thirty days to actually issue the debt, the bonds, and that's because um there is a property text component and they wanna give an extra thirty days for property owners to come in and voice their opinion. Now, we've already had to advertise that, and that's already well-known, but regardless, the never too much opportunity to hear about it, I guess, from, from, from the public. How these documents are set up that the building corporation has approved is it's an up to amount. And so I, I think you've heard that the fire department is looking at ways to potentially value engineer down some of the costs. They ended up adding a bay after the initial RFP, and then the interest rates went up slightly. Now the thought is the interest rates probably in the next thirty days certainly won't go up. If anything, they may actually go down, and there is some thought too from the fire department that there is potentially some tweaks they can do to bring the cost down. But um I think as I sent it to you, as it stands now, prior to any sort of value engineering down, we're looking at about two point two million dollar project. Interest rates right now are five percent with the potential fingers crossed that they could get as low as four and a half, although, you know, I, I, I've not seen anybody think that it would go up. I think it would only go down. But, but just to reiterate that um this doesn't lock in those costs, there's nothing that prevents the fire department and the building corporation and you all from negotiating things further down. Additionally, the construction agreement um requires that any expenses be approved before they're incurred. So there are um safeguards in place, but at the end of the day, you know, you guys and the building corporation and the fire department will all have to commit to some amount, but um there are still ways for you to, to keep that under control. We, we met before this meeting with the building corporation, that's what uh we were doing in there. They, they, you know, were comfortable with it and excited about it, I think even, with obviously the caveat that they're gonna look for some opportunities to reduce concrete, maybe look at, at one of the bays as well. But what's before you guys tonight is two things. One, um and I'll start passing these out, is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. This is an ordinance that would allow you guys to enter into the lease um and uh and issue, you know, the bonds through the building corporation. I think I have sent previously the actual lease agreement. I, I have a copy of that if you wanna see that. But, but this is the. Oh, did I not send enough? Oh, sorry. My apologies, I didn't print it up. And the lease agreement, um I have a copy of it here. I didn't kill a bunch of trees on that, but if anybody wants to see it, I, I know I emailed it a couple times too. But I'll tell you what the lease agreement says. It says that, that the town is going to pay on an annual basis that bond, what, what that bond payment is. Um, and then, you know, once, once the bond payment ends, the lease, the lease ends and the town takes possession and control, you know. Well, I take that back. You have an option, you have an option to, to buy back that building um at that point in time. So um, so I think uh, you know, that, those are, those are the, the basics of it. I don't know if there's any questions or comments beyond that.
I would have one on that. So you say you get the option to buy the building back. Aren't you not paying for, through your payments?
Yeah, oh yeah. So I mean, I, it would be sort of malpractice for the town not to take. Well, no, no, I'm sorry. You, to take it back for, it's like a dollar. That's what the option is, yeah. Yeah, you're basically trying, at the very end of the lease, the building becomes the town's.
Okay.
Does that make, yeah. Yeah, when I say option to buy it back, I mean it's, yeah.
Buying it in the first place.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, it's really the option to take, take possession of it, yeah.
Alright, I got you.
I mean, I can't imagine why we would not to, but twenty years from now, who knows what the layout of the county or the town or anything else could be. You know, it could, you know, we've seen fire departments pop up and other things that may not be an expense that the town continues to hold as far as the actual physical building. It may be a, if our, you know, fire territories happen, all those sorts of things could happen.
Yeah, so um, yeah, so that's what, so this is uh, yeah, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, which um authorizes the, the lease and the issuance of the bonds.
Okay, any thoughts, questions, or concerns? And this is just reading one, correct?
This is, no, this is, yeah, this is the.
The own.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay.
This is the second.
Second reading, okay. Oh, that's right, 'cause we did the first one last time. Alright, any thoughts, questions, or concerns? Right, then entertain motions to accept, town and Chandler ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Alright, I think that's it on that front. Do, do we end up having a notary that's here tonight? Okay, perfect. I'll, I'm gonna, I'll come back to you here in a minute when I'm, my section's done.
Okay.
Have you stand. Um, and then I think on the fire station, I think that's it for me. I was gonna say, and then obviously we've, uh, Michael, I'll defer to you on the nuisance issues if you wanna bring that up during your present, I don't know if you intend to. Um, and then obviously uh Tyler is the Energizer Bunny as it relates to all things um utilities, never a shortage of work and things to do. You know, we've talked about some of the um wat- water rate issues that, that um we're dealing with, and I think the plan is to get the engineering report that we need for that here in the next couple weeks to then get that on file um here, hopefully within the next couple weeks as well. So I think that's it for me unless you guys have further questions.
You're done.
Good.
Okay, then we're gonna move down to the police chief.
We have two people in training, one guy, he's actually in the FTO program, still training program. Hopefully looking at a month or two for him. Melody goes to the academy Thursday to see what it takes to get the waiver. She's been approved for the waiver, she has to go up and meet with a major, so it's a four-hour round trip for probably ten minutes of duties, but that's what she has to do. So she'll have some computer work to do when she gets back and hopefully get her in the FTO program soon. I don't feel like she's gonna take long. So that's that. We'll be at seven at that point. Once we get those two on the road, I'll be looking for somebody else to do the eight, but we can't handle three trainees at a time. Set up for that, so um the other thing, cop cycling for survivors will be coming through town tomorrow morning about somewhere around nine o'clock. It's a organization that they go statewide, it's thirteen-day bicycle ride. This is one of the few years they've had to come to this part of the state, but usually that Oakland city is about as far south as they get here. But they are gonna honor, they honor the uh, I believe they did the Bamber County deputy that died in the academy either tonight or that will be in the morning, then they're headed to Tell City. So they'll be coming by here, hunk at them, wave at them. There'll be about twenty, some of the bikes come.
What road will they be coming?
Coming down.
Coming down the, the actual highway?
Yes, yep.
And what time did you say that'll about?
They're supposed to be in Boonville at nine thirty, so we could be anywhere from quarter till nine to, unless they start early. With the heat, the way it is, they may start early. But they're gonna ride to Tell City tomorrow, so.
And just for clarification, your son is riding in that, correct?
My son is riding, he, he rode from Terre Haute today to Heavensville, he's riding to Tell City.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
How many per, to do this? How many?
It, it varies, I mean, people can ride legs and, I mean, there's, there's, there's a handful of them. I'd say maybe eight to ten would ride though thirteen days. So they, it's, it's pretty neat. They raise money, I mean, survivors, they, scholarships, uh, I mean, remodels, we'll never forget, so, or never forgotten. So I mean, they, they read off the down memorial, some things that each stop, so it's, it's pretty cool. I mean, if, if you're around Boonville, they're gonna stop Boonville PD tomorrow, so it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty neat. I've seen several days of it, 'cause you probably ride it all for two days one time, so. But it's, it's pretty, pretty good cause we're gonna probably try to do some type of fundraiser for them next year maybe.
So Misty, just for good measure, can we post that on the Facebook so folks can know that they're coming through? 'Cause I, I mean, I think it's a good thing for kids to see, and with them being out of school, that'd be a good thing for, you know. I know, there's two people live out by me that are writing to them. So, I mean, there's other local people writing. Really? So. Mm-hmm. Awesome.
Yeah, Chuck and Butler and his wife, they, they rode off and on over the years.
I, I'm gonna try to step outside, you know.
We'll see, I mean, they're, they're, state police is in front of them, state police is in behind them, they have the motors and stuff, so they're, you'll know they're coming. Pretty neat.
Well, I'll try to get outside the cold.
I don't know why you'd do that.
Yeah.
But that, that's all I have, I just wanted to bring that up, but nobody's gonna have questions about what's going on tomorrow, so that's.
Okay, I will post that again. I think that's a really cool event.
It is.
It's nice to see local people go in that. I know, um, I personally went to Tell City, was in Tell City when um the officer up there, when she passed away last year, and it was just very emotional seeing that part. So this'll probably be pretty emotional for them because I think her year.
Yep, it'll be, it'll be big deal over there after.
Okay, fire chief.
Uh, main thing I had tonight is we had a expense that didn't get put on claims. We need to get those off so we can write a check for that. It's our IBFA dues, they're due through the month, so uh Brian, you know, we'll have that to hide too.
Five hundred forty-five dollars. Yeah, it might just don't have it to claim, so I'll get it taken.
So we just need to have an individual approval of it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, just so I can issue the check before the next.
And it's how much again, five?
Five hundred forty-five.
Five hundred forty-five. Okay, so the IBFA, tell us what it stands for, just for.
So it's Indiana Volunteer Fire.
Association.
Association, so they uh, not insure us, but we're paying for a life insurance, small life insurance policy for every member of the fire department.
And they are also the ones that give you your certificate, you're certified through them, correct?
No, we're certified through the state. Um, they do like year-to-year service awards and stuff like that, so. There's a few other small benefits, but that's the main thing.
Alright, then I'd like to entertain motions to go forward and allow Brian to pay the five hundred fifty-four dollars for the IBFA dues for the fire department.
So moved.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, well, there was.
I'm sorry.
Ron was.
Sorry, I had a problem.
Okay.
So moved.
Tom, second.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, then Director Public Services Tyler Gendron.
Uh, the only thing I have this evening is the notice to proceed for telephone road. This is where I'm gonna get started on the water lines, uh, location. They plan on starting next week as long as the board.
How long is this supposed to take?
It depends. Uh, they got about a hundred and twenty days for substantial completion, so I'm hoping maybe they haven't pulled them in yet. They also have a timeline that kinda has to align with the county and their second phase and then for hot builders, so.
Gotcha.
They'll hit all these things that is in the progress.
Okay. Alright, then entertain motions to accept the notice to proceed for the telephone water main relocation with the contractor, um Jerry Iker. Make that motion.
Scotty.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Definitely, yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
And the only other thing I have really is I did send over a quote for the uh, the electric for this.
Yes, I was looking.
That is just a, I was still missing today, that's just kind of a base load. It'll differ, you know, depending on the wattage of the lights, on what they need to do, but that is just kind of the starting price. But that kinda gives you a number to start with. And that'll just be for the electric around the lake to get all, the, the first ten, and you could go to the second phase, hopefully for the next ten, if you want.
So like, if we did the first ten, it sounds dumb. Okay, we're able to do the first ten this year. Would we go straight line or would we be able to do like every other, spread them out?
It's whatever you want.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it always means that it's on the electric side.
Yeah.
So on the electric side, all they're going to do is, we're going to work with them on trying to get electric all the way around the lake. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna put basically junction boxes, big junction.
So we'll be able to tap in, like if we did choose to, that's what my question was. I don't think I actually said it correctly. So, you know, I know we have the hopes of eventually putting twenty to twenty-four lights um over there at the lake. And, but this would be ten, the first ten, but the first ten wouldn't have to be in a bunch.
Right.
It could be ten spread out, and where we could do like every other one.
Yep.
And then go from there, but we would have electricity. It'd be just tapping into it at that point, if we, we may have to add the next one.
That would be the next, the next step would be getting with them to verify exact locations because it's gonna be crucial for the conduits to come up. 'Cause all these comments, they're all set on concrete, that is.
Right.
All them, so they're gonna have to be as crucial that we get the conduit correct, so that would be the next step, location of where the lights actually will sit.
So we need, so to do even just the ten, we need to make sure we have the locations set out for all twenty?
Well, at least the first ten. And I mean, unless you plan on going across the lake, across the entrance, as long as you got, if you stay on the lakeside, the first ten will be fine. Even if you spread it out over there.
Okay.
But getting the conduit and the position of them would be crucial just to move forward with the electric.
But the question would be like, after they put the first ten in, then they put ten more in. They can use the electrical sources ran just to tap right into those, correct?
For, yes, it, the only thing that's gonna differ is if the, the panel is ma- is maxed. If it's maxed out, then we'll have to probably use the panel down by the um bathrooms. There's another panel there with a meter, we'll have to hop on it and probably see from that meter.
Okay, when you say panel?
The electrical panel, there's a junction box with circuit breakers.
The one that's, where's this one located at right now?
Right by the little kids park.
Okay.
Where all the cameras are set up on.
Okay, I was just wondering where you were pulling from. Okay.
So we got one by the lake that will be pulling from the lake, the second one will be down by the restaurants and little kid park.
Okay.
But for the next ten, if they have to pull off that one, you're talking quite a bit more expense to put together and lights in.
Correct.
Okay, so you could have like a double whammy on the electric.
Well, I think that's what Tanya was asking is, I mean, are you gonna put in all the electrical now, even though you're not putting in the lights? Yeah. Because if you're running, because if you're wanting to skip around, Tanya, then, I mean, we're still about to put in all the electrical all around. Eventually, that's what, I mean, that's what my question, that is exactly what I was.
Well, that, that quote, that quote is only for around the.
Just around the lake.
And the junction boxes for anything around.
And, you know, one of my thoughts and one of my, you know, putting twenty around the lake is a lot of posts. You know, I don't know if we actually need twenty around there, and then, but I don't know that we just need ten. You know.
I don't have my drawing room, but the, the one, my little dots that I had, that was only ten around the lake.
Your dots were only ten around the lake?
Yeah, then I had ten spread out throughout the park.
That's right, that's right. Now, 'cause I had forgot that because it was just a little bitty drawing. And that's what I was coming from is, 'cause in my mind, I was thinking that there was twenty that was going around the lake. I mean, man, that just seems like a lot today. Okay, that's right. So this is for the first part of the project.
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, it's just the base part.
And, you know, right, and I think that we would probably want to move with the ten around the lake first, no matter what. Just because of putting in the sidewalks and the, I mean, that would, and I mean, just ask police, just ask Kurt there. Adding lighting going around the lake would also help you guys as well, would it not?
It'd be good for us, yeah. Lights are a friend.
And, you know, they're very nice as well. Okay. So this is just for to go around the lake?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So then that goes to Misty, who has lots of different things. I don't know if you wanna go with your sidewalk part, the sidewalk or the pathway.
That's the one, we do the water utility.
Okay, fair enough.
Part first.
Fair enough.
And this is, and it's actually invented at the entire building, um, to switch credit card companies that we're currently using. It's something I worked on for a little while, but we just got the rates right and kind of where it will actually truly import into our system that we use now for payment processing. Um, this will allow for people to pay by name of source and they could pay in Apple Pay, Google Pay, or whatever it's called, Venmo.
PayPal.
PayPal, credit card, debit card.
And also offer twenty-four hour.
Yes, um, phone in to pay your bill, um, call twenty-four hours a day to like an auto me, the program to pay your bills. Since right now, if you wanna pay by phone, it's eight-four.
And right now, if they pay by phone, it's eight-four, 'cause they actually have to call it in the office.
Yeah, we talk to them in the office. Um, talk to other company, other um utilities that have used them. They love it, like it. I mean, problems, um, I think it's, we have problems with our current credit card company. I have problems balancing, this one is gonna be great because I could set it up for, um, Michael's payments will go portion of Michael's, the um permit side for cleaning and zoning, zoning, those will actually go in the general fund account.
So you have to do, you don't have to do a many.
Big massive transfers around and keeping track of where all this money goes with all the different budgets.
So it'll be directed easier.
Yes, 'cause right now, even our credit card company, they send it all into water, and then we, I take it and move it to storm water and sewer. So I'm hoping that that will help also a little bit.
So even like when someone pays the water bill?
Everything goes into water.
I know, I know, like now it does, but on this, with this one, if I call in to pay my water bill as a whole, which we know the water bill is broken down into lots of different things.
Yep.
Then it automatically will take that storm water and throw up the storm water, and you will not, your, you or your team will not have to be taking and dividing that all out.
Right.
You just need to check it when it first starts and do checks.
Okay.
Obviously.
Yep. This will allow police department, someone like Brian, the one that wants to press cards, debit cards.
It can be directed.
Yes.
Okay.
A certain percentage to every department.
Well, no, I mean, it's not a, a certain percentage every department, it's to ensure, like, before, we only had one place that we could bring in credit card payments, and then it had to be transferred to where it needs to go. So if someone wanted to purchase their permit for a building, they had to bring it into water, which is a separate entity, and then water for a APC building.
This thing, that would be so much cleaner.
It will be.
And we've had problems with our current company, it's a huge company that we use now, one of the biggest, and we don't get ones that are returned to us till I notice it on our banking accounts, and we have to question them on it. Sometimes they send us a report, sometimes they don't, you know, it's just kinda, we've had problems with them lately, but um. Oh, there is still a charge to the actual users, but it's somewhat comparable to what we have now. And we really don't have a lot of resistance in the fees that we charge now, so, as much as I thought we would years ago when we started it, so.
All, I mean, reality, almost all utilities.
Well, restaurants are doing it these days even, so.
It's the coming way of the world.
Yep.
So, hey, I mean, and one of the other things that, did you not say that they would be able to use this and set up their ACH themselves?
Yes, oh, it's great too, I mean, you could set it up with reminders on your phone, and send me a reminder the tenth of each month to pay my bill. It would send them a text message saying, time to pay your utility bill, and click on it, and they would automatically log them in and pay it after you set it up. So, you know, I mean, and it does have a feature too about, this is one we've always been fighting with banks of, um. The checks, the bank checks that we get now, most banks will not send it electronically to us, they still want to write us a check, and send us a check.
You're talking about bill pay?
Yes.
Like people who do bill pay?
Mm-hmm, through their own banks, and we have problems with several banks that we get to stack the checks from, that for each customer, this will take care of those opposite forms.
Really?
That's awesome.
It's, yeah, directed to them, and they, they take care of it. So, there's a lot of really neat features in this, and it's, all of them that you talk to, they're all young people, and they're all into this technology. Know a lot more about it than I do. So, if that's okay with you guys to move forward with that, then I just give those two secrets.
All right, any other questions from Misty?
Say, uh, say the bill pay, first bank to, to you, and you say now this company is going to take care of it?
Yep.
Will that be the same charge, would be a charge for that also?
Well, there is, but I think I calculated it's going to be less than a hundred dollars a month for us.
No, I mean, for the individual.
There's not for the individual.
Oh, no, there's still a fee for the individual at all, because that's all handled through your individual bank, so.
Yes.
If that was you, you would not even notice a difference. Because the bank's side it, and the program is going to take care of it. There's hardly any added fees to us, there's just a couple small, with some of the readers, I think it was, you know, there's a fee for that, but it's, I'm not charging the town a lot.
Just like for that bill pay or whatever, even with that hundred dollars, the amount of time that you're going to spend with employee.
I mean, sometimes it takes fourteen days to get those in the mail, I mean, we, we have problems with those.
Right, and then the redirection of us not having to actually do it and be able to use our resources elsewhere will help pay for that.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I thought it looked really good.
Yeah, me too, thank you, I know that you've worked real hard on this for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, entertain, like entertain motions to accept, um, I'm looking for the name on it.
Oh, invoice cloud?
What's it, what is it?
Invoice cloud?
Invoice cloud, oh, here it is, it's on this page, I was looking on the wrong page, sorry. Invoice cloud to move forward with them for the credit card payments.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Cheryl. Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
I, before, the community center, did you guys see that? They really need to be relaxed, it's been a few years, it's, it needs to be done. The prices have went up, you know, we've had a lot of problems with different companies in the past. I've tried two other ones, it can't get responses, but one of them, one we've used before, I think, around business, another one can't get response from. We know this company, we've dealt with them before, I'm kind of happy with his response.
Well, in their local and long term?
Yes, we know it'll be good, can I move forward with that? Brian says we have to.
That was going to be my only question, is that, I mean, we obviously need to.
Yes.
Any questions or concerns about moving forward with the community center estimate? Yep.
Yep.
So, do we need a move?
I mean, I mean, they're from the budget, so I don't, probably.
Oh, it's in the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't need it, but I just thought I'd get your approval on that. And then, um, the community center actually, for some reason, this, the rest of this month, it is not used one day. So I'm not sure what happened, but I'm going to try to get it in and get into the approval and get it done, because it's so odd that we have a month that.
So which also kind of brings up something that we've, we've shot out before, we'll shoot it out again today.
Thought I'd try to get you those numbers today, I might have time today.
I know, and that's fine, that's fine, but, um, and I, I've heard this from more than one person that lives here in the town. And, um, you know, after COVID or during COVID, we shut, we moved the prices up, because there was a lot of places that were a lot more in us. And we weren't getting a lot of out to, out of, I don't want to say out of town use, because we still want people to use the community center, because it is absolutely a community center. But I would like to see us do a discount for those that live in the town limits for the use of the community center. Their tax, their tax dollars help maintain that community center, and I'd like to see us roll it back to what it used to be. And I could probably go back and find those, but to have one, and my thoughts were two different ways. One, it's a community center, do we want to make it where if you have a Chandler address, not necessarily completely town limits, but a Chandler address? Or do we want to make it where you live in town limits? You know, I just know that I can think of two people right now who used to rent that and rent the community center for years. Who are no longer increment, renting the community center, because they can go elsewhere for less. You know, we want people to use the community center for family reunions, those sorts of things. And those were actually both family reunions that said, yeah, we're going somewhere else, because we can get a lot, we can get cheaper. And I've actually rented it twice myself in the last couple of years. And, uh, so, and if I can re, yeah, I can remember, I think. Where's the cleaning cost? Because I was thinking it, it was like six fifty?
For the entire facility?
Well, no, I was talking about, using the, the banquet room was like, okay, there's the two hundred dollar, six fifty. Yes.
Yeah, deposit, so it's really four or fifty to rent?
It's four fifty to rent, six fifty, and, you know, six fifty for a lot, for some folks is a lot to put up upfront to be able to use it. Even though it's, we've streamlined returning that way better than what it used to be, way better. But still, that's still a lot of money for someone to put it up, even four fifty is, and I don't remember if we were two or two fifty before.
I thought it was three twenty-five.
Well, then, see, I'm completely off. That's one of the things I would like to see us do, I don't know what, it's anyone else's thoughts on it.
I think if you're a channel resident, it'd be a good, good thing. And how often is that building either rented or used a month? Anytime I'm ever over there, I never see anybody there.
Well, it just varies, some months we have something, two, two things a different day, I mean, both weekend days. And, um, some, some months we're not as busy, I mean, some weddings, there's some weddings, there's some anniversary parties, reception, I have birthday parties.
But I mean, you probably got an average of, of how many times you rented it?
Yeah, I got a look at that today, Tom, I'm sorry.
You know, a year or whatever.
Yeah, um.
It was surprisingly more, we looked at that before.
We have, but that is.
I thought even.
Yeah.
I don't, I really, I can't, I can't tell you, Tom, so.
And, and where I was going with that is, okay, like Tanya's saying, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, okay? So I guess my thoughts are, if it's not being rented out a lot, wouldn't it be best to lower the rates a little bit and rent it more often than it just sitting there empty? That's where I was going with that.
And that's where I.
Lucky things with Tanya's going with it.
You see what I'm saying?
No, and that's where I was going with, hey, let's give our residents a better rate, for one, you know, because they're paying for it, but as a whole. I know we had had some, some issues with some weddings that were not necessarily from in the town limits, getting things cleaned and, well, just almost destroyed. Because of how low it was, and I thought that was one, I mean, that was one of the reasons it kind of went up a little bit.
And we thought with weddings, I mean, because we did a big comparison, yeah, it was right after COVID or whatever, during COVID, just right after. And that's one reason why we raised it, because we were really the cheapest place around, but.
And I'm not saying give it away, but I'm saying some revenue would be better than no revenue, if it's just sitting there empty. That's just my opinion of that.
No, I agree.
And I agree. I mean, I, I, I do, I completely agree. But like I said, I know two family reunions that we've lost that are in, one of them is in August, and I think one of them is in like October. And while that's nine hundred dollars we lost, but essentially we had had it where it was before, two fifty, three twenty-five, whatever it was. Or even if we just want a new number, if we'd done it, let's say it two fifty, that would have been five hundred we had and still losing nine hundred. So, and it's.
So I think I would suggest, maybe this is too generous, but I would suggest lowering it down to three hundred dollars.
For everyone or for every, okay?
And I think, I, my opinion is, for the citizens of Chandler that live in the city limits. I think we could give them an additional twenty-five percent off or some, some kind of percentage off. That's just some penny.
A fifty dollar bill or something?
Yeah.
I mean, even if we put that at two fifty for town residents and three hundred for anyone else.
That would work. I mean, let's see if it's starting to run anymore, not that it's not running a lot now, but running even more.
Yeah, and then you can see if you have more traffic flow, and so you're going to have more revenue in the long run.
Right, I mean.
So are we going to rent just the little room sometimes by itself?
The little room is sixty and with the seventy-five dollar deposit cleaning. So the little room is not horrible, I mean, I don't eat.
I couldn't remember what it was.
It's, it says sixty, you have to put up a hundred and thirty-five, but you get seventy-five of it back.
People don't usually bulk at that number for that.
Yeah, it's just not that much.
I mean, even for, we have a lot of kid birthday parties over there.
So, and then, but that goes back to rolling into the, um, the banquet room and then moving to the complete facility. So, like, someone could do the complete facility for three hundred, and then we could do three fifty if you don't live in town limits. Like three hundred if you live in town limits and, um, does that make sense?
Well, I think that's with the complete facilities, which you say.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Because there's a banquet, the big, the big room, the meeting room, and then if you just do the whole building.
Okay. Sorry.
And then what did you say, Tanya, how much for the complete?
If you did the complete facility, three hundred if you live in town limits, just another fifty dollars, because that's what it is to begin with. And that gives you a discount off of just doing the, you know, the medium room.
I mean, I, I think we should make a change on that.
Does anybody have any other comments about?
Or if you could give any press, I mean, that just was my, off the top of my head, what I was thinking.
Well, I mean, I'd just like to see what we have, have for that, because, and see if, see if it's more entertaining to folks. So, okay, then I'd like to entertain motions to move the banquet room to two fifty for town residents, three hundred for those outside of the town limits. Um, and leave the meeting room the same, and move complete facility to three hundred for town resi- residents. And three fifty for those outside the town limits, and then leave the deposits the same.
Got to make that motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Cheryl.
Yeah.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, now, with that being said, I know you have some of the rent, you probably have some of it rented out and paid for.
Yep.
I would like to say since we're changing as of today, that I think that when the deposit is returned, then those differences are returned to those folks. Does that make sense?
Yep. Um, along with that. Um, I did, um, move a meeting over there on Friday night. There was a group, Chandler group, asking to have a meeting regarding adding some new activities to Chandler. Um, it had been raining about an hour before that, and it was really hot outside, and I was going to be there, and I was like, that building's sitting fifty, and it's really good at Chandler. We're going over there, so I hope that was okay. I mean, it's, you know, for people trying to do something good for the town. Along with that, they've already come back today now and asked me if we can have one more meeting. They're, they're trying to figure out an event for August the third, thinking a fishing tournament slash back to school bash type thing. For August the third over at that park, and she asked if, if I'm with them, can we use that building again? So I wanted to make sure that's okay with you, if I have a small meeting in that room, and of course, anyone is invited to this, I don't think they have a name, it's just some citizens wanting to have some added events. I'm sure you've all seen this on Facebook.
Yeah, I mean, if you didn't do it there, it could even be here, is, I mean.
Oh, and I had actually even said that, I was like, I just have to, to have a meeting here, it has to be employed here with them.
Yes.
For security reasons.
Correct, you're absolutely right.
But anyone just have this ability, they, you know, have access to it.
No, I was just meaning that, you know, you were going to be here, I mean, I couldn't come on Friday, I already had a previous event planned. But I'm not saying I won't come if I'm able to to the next one.
Yeah, and then, um, I did check with Rita today on insurance, what kind of added insurance we would need for these type of events, so she's supposed to be checking on that and getting back to us. I told them the other side, I went to them, telling them I'm a, I'm a citizen, I drove my own car to it, I'm, I just happen to have the link to the town too. So I'm kind of part town, but part citizen, because I like these events, you know. So, um, my two things was I'm checking on insurance, and I'm checking with Josh to see if there's any legal concerns. If we have, if it's a group that doesn't have, you know, any coverage at all, they're, you know, it's just concerned citizens, we need to have parties at the park essentially. But like reptile day or the fishing derby, what other, I, and I really think you as a town would probably be kind of, would not helping promote it, and also, I mean.
If our liability insurance covers it, then would there be anything else they need? I think that's the real question that comes out.
Yeah, I mean, it's not unusual for these kind of scenarios to, for most counties, a lot of people that don't have insurance, I mean, I think the key is we have a release that they sign. You look at the risk versus benefit, I mean, ob- obviously it's a policy decision for you guys, but I'll tell you that other people do it all the time, and it works, and, um, you know, you just have to have a waiver.
But a waiver from, because they don't really have a not-for-profit group or?
So, well, in their personal capacity or business, whoever it is that's renting it, yeah.
Or you utilizing it.
Does the waiver protect them, Josh, like if they're serving like a food product or something, and somebody gets sick or whatever, does the waiver protect them from being sued? The individuals, just that just brings you.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's going to be the particulars of who all, um, and I guess I was, so I'm, just so I understand, I was thinking it would be groups that were using it themselves, but.
It's not a group, I mean, it's not, I mean, this is literally him and him and him deciding we want to have a fishing derby this weekend for the town of Chandler Kids, the town one.
I see, right.
They don't have like.
Well, let's chat, yeah, let's chat about how we can structure that. But it, it had, I mean, there are ways to tack if you guys want.
What about if the Wester family goes over to the park, Chandler House, would it be the same type of thing?
Uh, well, that's kind of where I'm at, I don't know.
But, yeah, but some of it is, you know, like, we, we require liability insurance when we rent out the facilities.
Well, you know, I'll rent it, but just all the group uses it.
But if you're advertising, you're advertising it, then that's where the liability comes in.
Other people utilizing besides that, to a group, but whatever.
You're opening it up to the complete community, then that's where the liability comes in. If I have a, a birthday party for your, you know, if I have a birthday party for my kids, or, you know, for kids or something other like that, and everybody gets food poisoning from the cake that I bought somewhere. Then, yeah, that could come back towards me, but it could come back towards the town, you know? That's a different thing, but when you're opening it up to everybody, then that's where your liability comes in, and your concern comes in, that you want to make sure you're covered. Like, I'm, I will never, ever deny this, I am absolutely terrified of reptiles, okay? But I like the idea that I just. But I like the idea that I just won't get close.
I know, exactly, I was like, well, it's not my favorite, and I go with people like you.
Yeah.
I know, it's like, ooh.
All right, so, but, you know, if you bring a snake over there and it bites someone, where's the liability that comes in on that is what you're saying?
Rita told me today that they really should have insurance, if they're bringing them and it's their snakes.
Okay, and where do we have that coming in with them? So, and I think that's what Josh was saying, it's like, where do we get that?
Previous experience, you have to ask that company to show, to give you a copy of their liability insurance.
And showing that we're as covered.
Right. Okay. Um, so right now, that's the thoughts as of today, is August third, back to school bash, I don't know what else it's gonna include, fishing tournament.
I think the fishing tournament might actually be easier than the.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Actually doing the other, because we could get a waiver for every kid that participates in fishing a tournament and cover that easier than just about anything. You know? You sign off on your kid. Well, but you, yeah, but a parent would have to sign off on it.
Exactly. So, um, I'm sorry, Parks has taken forever. Um, I did meet with a gentleman today that was wanting, that had come back to us before, lives over by the fire, Tom, Tom Lecter. Was wanting to plant a tree. He never did do that, cause it got too cold last year and decided to wait. Unfortunately, his wife did pass away about a month ago, I'm not sure if you guys remember that. So now he wants to print two trees over there. And I met with him today to kinda give me the idea of where. Um, I'm gonna ask these two to look at it, make sure they don't have problems with it, and if so, I'm going with it. So I looked at the trees, they're big nice trees, should be good. Um, unless you guys have any concerns about that?
No, none.
Good. Um, the lake still looks horribly bad today, um, I took a picture to send it to him, but I know some of that chemicals takes a little while. But I think it's just the hot and the, a lot of rain, it all messes with lakes and you get this from years, from years. So I don't know, I will send it to him yet this week where it's starting looking better. But right now today, it looks worse than I've seen it yet.
I was gonna say, I'm hoping it gets better after the weather breaks, when you say.
Yeah, maybe.
The temperature, I think the heat isn't gonna be right now.
Heat excels that stuff.
Yes.
Um. I think that's all I have. That's good, let's, let's move on.
Sidewalks.
Oh, come on.
I know.
I had worked three and a half days since our last meeting, I have not got that, um, um, totally reined in, or, um, well.
Okay.
What you wanna call it. Um, I do have problems, as I told some of you after our last meeting, with one of the estimates. But that continued even more today with some postings on Facebook, so. I, I think I'm going to. Yeah, I, I didn't get the estimate updated today, like I tried, we tried and I didn't get it. Um, cut out a little bit more of it to get the price down closer to a hundred thousand, and I hopefully.
Be ready by next day.
Yeah. And then that will give us still August, September, October, to figure out all the rest. I mean, cause as soon as we get that price locked in, we could do the other prices for the ARP money. Cause that goes into the ARP money that we were trying to get it done, but, um, yeah.
All right. Is that it?
Anything else about the sidewalks that I told you about? We did have some vehicles at the park last night. Um, it was awesome to watch the video with them lighting up the trash cans, look at Kirk, don't tell, don't tell our stories. Should I not tell that?
Don't worry about it, no, that's fine.
No, yeah, Kirk's working on it, getting some leads, um, lighting up big fireworks under the shelter house and in one of the trash cans. So, yeah, it's great on video. With our new tables, so I've been up there looking at the new tables today going, are they burnt at all? So we gotta get them under control. Talking about, nothing else, even just doing a general post. It's just without names or anything or pictures and saying. We see you doing this, we're working on this, if you know anything about it, please let us know, you know?
Like a tip line, like a tip.
It's so disheartening.
It is. Yeah, like I said, I worked on that for a while today, it's just, it's been a Parks kinda day, so. But, um, move on, please, I know I've taken up way too much time.
All right. Well, thank you for all of your information and, yeah, if we can post something saying something generic. Obviously, we believe these are younger folks doing this, don't want that out there like that, but just something generic that says, you know, we've had this happen. If you know anything about it, please let, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And remind citizens to call, cause that was a.
Yes.
Um, it was actually a county employee, but the citizen that lives up there that called in. And I know Mr. Lecter come outside too and told him it was time to go home. So, yeah, so they all heard it over there, called the police about it, so.
All right. Environmental manager.
Been working with, uh, property at three ten south, oh, sorry, north second street. Uh, sent a letter to abate nuisance. Uh, the letter was sent June twenty-sixth, but previously sent that letter back in March. Uh, I had visited the home, left a, uh, we have these red door hangers that Chief Irwin, uh, gave me some. And on there it has the, uh, the violation, uh, how many days they should have to fix it. And I did that back March fourteenth, and after that, we had a storm, tree blew down, gave them some mercy because of that. So then, when we did send the letter, uh, it was sent June twenty-sixth, giving them, uh, until July nine to, uh, abate the nuisance. And, uh, the post office tells me they attempted delivery on six twenty-eight, seven three, seven thirteen. And, uh, so there's, they've given us back that certified letter. So, uh, just trying to understand how we should move forward with this, it's a property that needs to be cleaned up, front yard's a mess.
What address did you say again?
Uh, three ten north second street.
Okay.
You've seen that, you've.
Yes.
You're not talking.
Yes, we have, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So, we're at the point where if, uh, we can have this understanding and I have the authority to move forward, we're ready to. Basically take the dump truck and do our thing. Is that what I understand, Josh?
Yep.
Um, I, I, I would be interested in some directives, we've done this before, cleaning properties, uh, it's a little sensitive. There's some children's toys, bicycles and whatnot strewn about, sun out by the street, I was by there today. So, uh, interested in your thoughts concerning, uh, the toys, there are old wooden pallets, there's absolutely some trash that we haul away. Uh, feel good about, but, um, to just clean that front yard up, it's, it's just a little sensitive dealing with those kind of things.
I mean, obviously. We're not in the business of throwing away kids' toys.
Right.
However.
In the past, when we've done this, we've organized them, take them to the backyard, not to say that the folk don't bring them back. Yeah, the front yard, but at least when we leave, there's a, a better appearance to the house.
But it was pretty bad the last time I went past it.
Yeah.
Which is a shame. Um, anyone's thoughts on that? With the, I mean, is, is the tree been taken care of at all, the one that fell?
Uh, there is still some remnants.
You know, and there's the one on the highway as well, on those, when those fall and then they just left, they're just. A place for reptiles to go to, is the way I look at them, but, you know, um.
We, we pretty much have our week mapped out with regards to call repairs this week is probably already put down, but we can maybe get to this property next week and put it up.
Do you want to have any prob, I mean, we kinda need to set a standard for what Michael, for him to move forward on this.
Last, last time we did this, we hired a contractor to do it, but this time we have the building and house to do this, learn with our contractor, uh, Casey.
Still living there?
Oh, absolutely.
Is it a rental property or a homeowner property?
I lived a homeowner property, uh, according to the information I have.
And how many times did the post office try to deliver this?
Three times. And I questioned them, they were, uh, you know, they go to the door, nobody's there, they leave a tag and they say, pick up the post office. They've done that three times and they failed to come to the post office to get the.
And you're given a final thing on those two.
Pardon me?
They give you one that says the final thing, that if you do not pick it up by X date, it will be returned.
Right, right.
Um, cause.
I was at the post office today and he returned it to us.
My opinion would be, um. I know this isn't our normal protocol, but I, I think my opinion would be, Michael, you would have one of the police officers to try to go maybe in the evening. To see if they can raise anybody at the door and hand them that letter and tell them that they have until, um, midnight Sunday the twenty-first. That's, you know, that, what, five days? To take care of the situation and then if they don't, that someone will be cleaning it up.
And, and if they're, they don't answer, just leave it there, tucked in the door or somewhere there, that'll be good.
And especially since, that's a great idea, especially since, you know, you said you definitely can't attend to it this week, it would be next week anyway.
I would just tell them they have till Sunday night at midnight.
Twenty-one.
Uh-huh. To clean the nuisance.
So that would allow you anytime next week that you're available to be able to do it on your, on, to lay out your time.
What do you think in regards to the fines?
Um, I think go forward with the fines. That's why we haven't been playing forward with fines.
What he's asking about is when do they get, when do they start getting assessed, is that what you're asking?
Yes, because this letter says midnight July nine, you're saying now twenty-one.
Well, what she's saying is that we will do the process of cleaning up. You know, I don't know, maybe the letter needs to say something a little bit different, because they should have already been started to be fined.
I think the fines should go as stated, we're actually giving them a reprieve of being able to save what they want to save.
And not us.
I know situations.
Us not.
You don't know, you don't know the situation with the people, if they're physically capable of cleaning up or not. But again, like we've gotten into before. If they would just respond and say, hey, I'm not capable of doing this, do you know any way I can get help? You know, I mean, there's been a host of people that's went out and helped people, you know that, we've all done it.
Again, they've had basically four notices, but, uh, the other motive behind that question would be if they've disregarded this certified letter with regards to the fines. Should we not just prepare the invoice and send it by the police department?
Are you talking about the invoice for the fines?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would say yes.
I mean, they're not gonna receive it, so the only way we can communicate would be through a, a delivery.
And then, you know, this net last lender basically is giving them an opportunity to clean it up or save anything. With, because we will also have to charge them for the cleanup. And then those can go, you know, those things will go on lanes on their property. As you know, I mean, as you know, I mean, yes, we can do it in-house, which is less expensive for someone now than us hiring a contractor. But it doesn't mean that Casey's work is for free.
We have, we have rates, we already have, you know, rates.
That's what I'm saying, that, that there's still rates in there.
So much for dump trucks, so much for town, all that will apply.
But it's not as expensive as what a contractor would be.
Right.
Um, so, yeah. And we can't let it continue on, because if you let it continue on, then we get to where we've been at some of the other ones, where it's absolutely unsafe to go and, and for our folks to do it.
It might not be a bad if they take a picture whenever they.
Drop it, yeah.
Just a phone screenshot.
And they have to leave it in the door, take a picture.
Uh, I have the picture of the one I left in the door on March.
I know, but I'm saying this letter here.
I made sure you did, I thought you did, I made sure.
Okay, well, it's asked for the choice to do that, but go ahead.
I would think that. I know who that individual is, and I would think they would be home in the evening.
I think she's home all the time, honestly.
Yeah. You're right. I, I believe you're correct.
Uh, the second property would be Kemper's. Uh, we issued a letter on, uh, June seventeen, there was a twenty-day period, so if we count the days, I think it's been like twenty-eight days. They were given twenty days, so they've passed their time of grace and, um. The only way that I think we can understand this property is to actually go in and inspect the inside. Because as regards to old food, mold, uh, things that are inside that will have to be seen, so. We'll have to get, uh, access and do the inspection and.
You're having a hard time doing that with them all living out of state.
Well, there's one in Fishers, and there's also, the person who signed for this letter lives on Lincoln Avenue in Evansville. And so, um, there should be someone, I've got one, two, three, four phone numbers and one email. We could blast it out and see what kind of response we get.
They need to clean up the outside, I've had several complaints this week about the outside.
We can easily clean the outside, but, I mean, as far as the grass, cause that's basically the grass, the weeds, we can access that. But to check for the old food, moldy, all that, we will have to budge past, we'll have to go inside and inspect that. And it's, if indeed we find something that needs to be worked on, changed or cleaned, uh, we'll need professionals to do that. That will be able to be, you know, abatement for mold, uh, pest control and that sort of thing.
I'm pretty sure the pictures I showed you the last time haven't changed.
Well.
We've not seen much.
In order to.
There's not been anybody up there to clean.
And, you know, I guess, uh, in the event that we have to do that, um, we'll, we'll just need continued access to the building. So therefore, I'm just looking for confirmation here.
Yeah, um, this is an interesting one, because typically you can tell from the outside, I mean, a lot of this is gonna, now, there's outdoor problems too. But the indoor ones, we do have to get in and confirm to some degree. Um, we have the tools to do it, and from a statutory standpoint, that allows us to do that, um. But I wanna make sure there's not another notice that needs to be provided, so how about you and I tomorrow at eleven, uh, Michael? Um, but if the town council's okay to sort of give us the direction to move forward as much as possible, we can.
I think the council as a whole has had enough.
Yeah.
We're ready to completely move forward, it's a, it's a. It's a shame that you have to move forward like this, but it is something that just needs to be done.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll just stop there.
And.
It, it, it needs to happen. This, telling people that, um, it needs to happen.
Sooner rather than later.
Yep, as soon as possible. Okay.
Will.
It's a shame we've lost our grocery store to such a situation.
Well, I think we can move ahead with the outside work right now, can we not?
Yes, absolutely.
And then we can start filing our, be, leave our leads, correct?
The outside, the outside part can go ahead and be moved forward, and they should also be fined as well.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. It's the inside part that we need to.
But the, the inside part, yeah, needs to be chatted with. But the outside part, no delays, as soon as it's abate, as soon as you are available, it's available to be done, get it done.
Then do we send the bill to that person or do we just automatically file it?
Well, generally, we send them an invoice, and then if they don't pay the invoice, then that goes through the automatic.
Yeah, we send an invoice, give them thirty days and, and.
So, anything else?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Brooke Treasure. And then we have Parks and Reg and we're not going back there. Anyone have any news, new business? Okay, any old business, I, you know, we've discussed nuisance buildings, um. Pretty much all. That we have updates on here, so we're gonna move down to presentation claims, presentation claims right now, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six dollars and seventy-four cents. Any thoughts, questions, concerns, changes to be had? Then if not, I'd like to entertain motion to accept the claim as presented, the seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, claims will pass as presented, then at this point in time, I'd like to entertain motions to recess until our next regular scheduled meeting, which is actually August. Holy cow, it's already August. August fifth.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a nice evening.